Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November ninth for Falls City Council meeting. First, you have goosebumps. It's a pleasure to be here.
But we've been sticking with the state's former engineer, which is saying this one nation that is all better than justice for him.
Okay, raise your hand, all of us, please.
Here, Steph.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Here.
Here, Steph.
Here.
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 I should approve a motion to the October twenty-sixth meeting?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
First and second, any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Next, I approve all the bills. Please put on Mr. Galloway.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move approval of the bills in the amount of one million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents, subject to the control.
Second.
First and second, any questions on the bills? All in favor?
I am opposed.
Okay, next will be public comments. If there's anybody in the audience who has anything to stand up and talk about, time? Okay, we will, at this point, we will close the council meeting and open up a public hearing on Norman's twenty-twenty dash zero nine. Disordance is appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of Cedar Falls, Wisconsin for the year twenty-twenty-two. This is the second reading. If anybody in the audience has anything to talk about? Okay, Mr. Simpson, give us a little presentation here and I'll see, I'll leave it in public in case anybody has any questions after the presentation.
If you have trouble hearing me, I can take you, or else I'll leave it on. Okay. Um, so I just wanted to provide, this is a public hearing for the twenty-twenty-two. The next item on the agenda number three is the resolution authorizing the long-term fiscal plan. Councils have two workshops on that and you previously talked about the budget, but I do want to give, I'm not going to go through all the slides that we have. Just leave it out, go through some of the slides and then if you have any actions that you know about either of the items, or I can stand second item separately if you want to mention them. So. We'll quickly go through and talk about the, where the plans sit with each other. The twenty-twenty-two budget and proposed levy is a separate action that the council's taking essentially your reaffirming, second year of the two-year budget that you previously adopted. And they are adopting a levy to points to the second half of the speak of the levy. It's necessary to operate in two-year budget, two-year budget cycle. Still under state law, you have to adopt a levy each year. And then we'll talk about the fiscal plan, which does include the second half of the two-year budget of twenty-twenty-two and then also goes into twenty-twenty-six. It adopts a framework for the staff to use when presenting your future budgets. So we use a strategic plan as our overall guidance and then other plans that we use that fit within that include the fiscal plan, which will be asked to take resolution and get final approval of, and then the budget plan. Using those as the reason, the understanding for what the adopted levy, the taxes that will need to be levied against the properties in town, but it also sets the goals for revenue on the fees and charges and then sets a limitation on the expenditures that you expect it to operate in. So the, the themes in the budget that you adopted were future financial sustainability, long-term growth and continued investment in infrastructure. Much of the infrastructure is underground infrastructure or things like improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, which are not highly visible in the community, significant investments in long-term related private services. In addition, we had added the need to address any impacts related to COVID actions and also long-term. So once the, once the budget was going forward, we also had to pivot on that. I listened to your budget that you adopted. Is that, we kind of wanted to focus on long-term fiscal sustainability. Levy increase was equal to that new construction, which essentially means the taxes are flat. So existing property taxpayers pay essentially the same as they had the prior year. That's for both twenty-one and twenty-two. So the, the increase in the levy is only equal to the amount of new property taxes in the community. That was a goal set by the council. We wanted to maintain our strong fund balance in case we need that to respond to things at the time that were quite unknown. And then we wanted to make sure that we have modest municipal spending increases that would still qualify us for the municipal expenditure restraint programs in the state of Wisconsin. That identifies communities that, that demonstrate the most fiscal restraint in their expenditure. That's in the expenditure side of what we do. And then we want to keep paying down debt, make sure that we're not extending the obligations of future generations beyond useful life of those projects that are going to occur. And in many cases, we do have a situation where current generations are paying for assets or say a twenty-year period of time, even though life of that project is going to be forty years, so we're essentially paying, paying forward to the next generation. Couple of things that I want to just mention that are different from the original, or cost drivers, so the budget is the same, we're proposing the same levy, no increase in the levy that you had, you said for us originally. We were able to add additional hires in community development, IT and public works to meet service demands, so those are front-facing employees working with service to the community. In particular, IT is a front-facing, even though it's a kind of a back of a house operation for us, it, it's allowed us to do a lot of the front-facing performance in the new kind of virtual service standard that's been out there for us. Uh, we are planning to give larger than anticipated pay increases in twenty-twenty-two for the four percent increase in cost of living, both as a reflection of our appreciation for the flexibility and innovation shown over the course of the last couple of years and also acknowledging that there is a significant pressure on wages and their purchasing power based on the inflation that we're experiencing. Uh, and then the comprehensive plan was not included in the original budget, we were able to use cost savings that we derived over the, the last two years to just pay for that upfront as so to speak in twenty-one, so it's not the impact levy. So despite all these cost changes, there's no changes proposed to the previously approved levy amount, which again is flat based on net construction. So this is a quick table showing a trajectory of our gross and net levy. Again, gross is the total increase in levy, the real number increase, and then net levy increase is after that new construction. So again, houses and businesses that were in Cedar Falls in twenty-twenty, they're paying essentially the same amount portion of the taxes, the new growth taxes, levy is on the new. This is a recap, I think all of you have seen this before. Bill comes and it looks like it's from us, collecting on behalf of all of our partner agencies, and the city of Cedar Falls makes up about twenty-eight percent of the total tax bill. Uh, this slide is subject to change when we do, this is not what we submit to the county. We still have a whole bunch of work to do before the property tax bills are generated. So this is done on estimated on the total number of parcels in synchro, the total number of parcels, here's county, and total amount of levy, assessed valuations, but this gives you an idea of the rough impact of the tax levy that you're approving. So we expect that it'll be flat or less. This average shows, we had a hundred and eighty thousand on a home in twenty-twenty, that, that's the average assessed value then. Um, then there was a market revaluation this year, so that home would be about two hundred and fifty thousand assessed value for twenty-one. The fair market value, by the way, would be similar in both, both cases, right? So in twenty-twenty, we were at less than one hundred percent of market value, so those were all equalized out, but this is the same home per mearity, the city portion of taxes on average assessed is going to go down in a fifty-dollar range overall, so maybe four dollars a month. There will be some changes, different changes to individual property taxes, tax bills based on the, the assessment. So if your home may be lagged in assessed valuation and now it's caught up, you may pay a little bit more taxes and if your property is already pretty close to market value before the reevaluation, although too many of those, then you'll probably see a bigger decrease in taxes on the city portion only after property tax bill. And we don't have all the other tax and jurisdictions at this one. So the levy will be seven, what are we levying? The levy amount is seven million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. And that's authorized to be levied across all taxable properties. So the non-taxable properties, taxable properties, churches, schools and others are not paying a portion of that. Any questions on what the action before the council is related to this, to the adoption of twenty-twenty-two or now of the twenty-two budget and second levy? Very anticlimactic, given all of your previous planning efforts. I would, I would say there's not many things that we all as consumers have experienced of flat pricing over two-year period. And that's essentially what the council direction was to staff, and that's what we've accomplished by this. So for twenty-one and twenty-two, there, there's no net increase in the cost of general property taxes. Mayor, is your preference to wait and do the fiscal plan presentation after you do the budget or not wait the presentation now? Okay. So the fiscal plan is a six-year, five or six-year planning horizon where we take a look at how can you, what is sustainable and it gives us a check to make sure that we're not making short-term decisions that are going to impact future budgets or get the council in a situation where our revenues and expenditures are, are not logical, giving what we want to accomplish. So it gives you some view into the future, but it also sets some policy guardrails for staff. So it combines kind of forecasting, but also strategy, so you're doing both. And then you're setting a policy, although this, approving the fiscal plan doesn't tax anyone, it doesn't set the, those are actions that have to be done separately by the council. But obviously you could argue that if you, once you set a plan in place, that if you don't implement those taxes, fees and other things, then you have to modify it. So it doesn't tie the hands of the council, but it certainly sets a direction of that you want to go and it lets the community know what direction you expect to do. Well, we'll skip this fiscal plan history. Um, we've done conservative projections on the revenue side and the expenditure side. So usually on the expenditure side, we, we estimate a higher level of expenditure than we hope is going to be the case. And revenues, we underestimate the revenues compared to what we expect or hope will be the revenue. So for example, we only, in this plan anticipate increasing the assessed value of one percent a year, which we, we've had increased in assessed value more than average in the last twelve years. We have some targets for each of the levy support, and in particular, the library is an important program for the community and the levy target there is about ten percent. We started in twenty-fifteen with the, the library was requiring sixteen percent of the total levy to operate at the level it was operating. We've proposed a ten percent of the total levy and we, we meet that mark in twenty-fifth, or I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-five, and then we'd be able to provide an increase in the levy going to the library for twenty-twenty-six based on, you know, benchmarking ten percent of the levy. So if the levy's at eight, eight point nine-five million, then eight hundred and ninety-five thousand would be available for operations. Just to put some context in this, average levy for libraries in ten to twenty thousand population of Wisconsin is six hundred thousand. So we're significantly ahead of the average and I don't think any of us are looking for an average library, but that just gives you some context that even though we're, we're trying to smooth that amount of levy and been holding the levy relatively flat for a number of years, and we're projecting to do so going forward a few more years, the support of this community and the library is significant. So what, what did we do compared to the budget? We added the staffing and talked about the cost of living and then the fiscal plan does reduce the fund balance by a small amount, with the goal of getting back to that fifty percent subsequent years, unless the council sets a different strategy between now and then. You've seen a couple drafts of fiscal plan since the last fiscal plan, we talked about the council and had some discussion at the last workshop, including implementation of the wheel tax in twenty-twenty-three. We assumed only a ten-dollar wheel tax and then we put one hundred percent of associated revenue for street maintenance. So an increase in the base amount of money each year for street maintenance. The council also talked to us about implementation of street light utility as soon as twenty-twenty-three. That would be a reduction in the general fund expenses because it would be funded through a fee. And, and that is something that we have about mid-year of twenty-twenty-three in the fiscal plan. Again, adopting the fiscal plan doesn't adopt a streetlight fee or the wheel tax, so there are actions that have to be done separately. The council had indicated a concern about service levels and being able to support those with existing staffing, and so we've included two-plus FTEs in twenty-twenty-three. The reason we say two-pluses, we've included in the fiscal plan assumptions, two more general fund funded positions will likely be able to get one or two additional positions that are enterprise funds, so for the utilities or other services, but general fund would be things like police, city clerk's office, customer service and things like that. Public works. We increased based on what we're seeing for forecasts, we've increased the assumed salary inflation from three to four. We've increased the assumed benefit inflation from five to six, so those are just slight modifications, but I want the council to be aware of that. And then we've decreased the sinking fund for the, the self-contained breathing for the fire department, not because they're not planning to do it, but we think we can use some fund balance and some cost savings in other areas to kind of fund that in a little sum rather than collecting as much in the sinking fund over the years. We also think we might be able to level this based on the life expectancy of the current units. So that's a, a small change again, but I just wanted to know. And I didn't want to note that there is an increase, so the first fiscal plan we saw was eight hundred and fifty thousand flat for the entire period for the library, given the increase in levy that the council, that's results, is partly what the council has asked us to incorporate. It allows us, if you'd like to continue to index at that ten percent, it actually would allow an increase in levy going to the library in that last year, twenty-twenty-six. And then we, we changed timing of some of the reserve funding, so we talked about applying some more of our fund minimums at different points than the fiscal plan to, to fund, and there's some modifications in that, but I don't, I don't suspect that those are substantial enough, but I just want to show you where some of the dials were determined from our policy standpoint. This would be the resulting growth in that, so you can see we've come down at zero and then we'll be building back up over time. The lower line, which is difficult to tell the difference in color on that screen up there, but the lower line is the net, so that's kind of how it feels. Get your property tax bill, what's it going to feel like from year to year on your individual property tax bill, because there's quite a bit of growth projected over that time. And in fact, we're closing TID, so all that, you know, forty, fifty million dollars of value would be contributed on the tax roll at that time, so that additional tax levy in those years beyond that. This is just showing the fund balance that we're tracking a little bit below that fifty percent, but it also shows you the real dollar, there's a real dollar increase in fund balance, it's just that your levy's going up, tracking at this kind of fund. And that's something that the council and staff will have to have future discussions about what your comfort level is. Well, a couple of things to note that are not in here, we're not using any ARPA funds to fill any holes or do any significant investment. It's a whole different discussion that we expect the council and the community might have, but it's not used to fill or supplant any of the funds. So we're, we're operating as if we need to pay for our operations with our revenues and the money that's coming from the federal government that we've already had pledged to us or that may come in some new package that's not included in the fiscal plan assumptions. Talked about the comprehensive plan. And we also didn't include any of the positive impact on fund balance that we accept, expect for current vacancies, as the council knows, we've been operating very lean, we've held a lot of vacancies open, we're not anticipating that those are all going to be filled, and so we'll likely have less expenditure in twenty-twenty-one. We budgeted for in the personnel line and so those, we just assumed we'd have those expenses just in case, it's come together with hiring that, but I don't expect that's going to be the case with, with two months left of the year. So next step is approval of the budget and then formal approval of the fiscal plan. I also had the opportunity at either of those items to make amendments if they're, if they're not satisfied with the way that things are laid out or you have specific policy differences in what's laid out in those documents, that'd be your opportunity to have formal action. So is there any questions I can answer?
Yes, good. Public hearing and then we'll get into council, can I ask you a question?
Sure, I can answer questions from there, if that's okay with you.
Uh, so we're still on public hearing on the, um, that's, um, any proof appropriate and necessary plan for the operation of the government? Does everybody in the audience have any questions on this? All right, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing and I'll take a motion on it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash one-nine appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city. Second.
Okay, first and second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll close the council hearing and open up another public hearing on resolution regarding the twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-six long-range fiscal plan and adoption of the financial goals and policies. Is everybody in the audience who has anything to say about this? Okay, close the council hearing and open up the council hearing and I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we accept the resolution or approve the resolution regarding the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-six long-term fiscal plan and adoption of financial goals and policies.
Second.
Okay, first and second, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, quick. Question for our city administrator, Mr. Simpson. We have a wheel tax that we're looking at in this long-range fiscal policy plan. Wheel tax, the word itself is not representative of what it is. What a wheel tax is, is a vehicle registration fee. Because of that, it's a flat fee, it doesn't discriminate against how much money a person has or doesn't have. And what's unique about our city is we have two counties, we have Pierce and St. Croix County. St. Croix County already has a pass, and Pierce County is capable of levying your own. So what I'm asking you tonight is, is the city capable of handing the city council something that's balanced, so it equals out between both counties in the spirit of people who live here? Yeah, the, the application of the, what's known as a wheel tax, which is a vehicle registration fee, is a fairly straightforward approach once the policy decision is made by the council to do so. Yeah, the ability to set, set the fee amount, which we proposed at, at ten dollars per vehicle registration. Once you do that, then, then every time somebody gets a vehicle registration renewal or they do a new registration, they indicate the county and city they live in, which we already do, and there's an additional ten dollars comes up, you pay that fee and then the state remits that to the city. So the system from a fairness perspective, that can be debated by the council if you think that, if it's regressive or progressive, but in its application, it's just every vehicle that's registered within the city limits. So it would be the same in Pierce and St. Croix County, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be an eight-dollar fee in St. Croix County and a six-dollar fee in Pierce County. I don't, I don't, we haven't done significant research on that, but that's how the mechanics of the fee is, it's applied across the entire city the same. So car that's on one side of the vision street is going to have the same fee as a car, car on the other side. So in that respect, I think we have the ability, should the council choose to do so. So the, the council does have the ability to restructure that if they wanted to, right? The council can reduce the fee, increase the fee from what we proposed in the fiscal plan, you don't have the ability to restructure how the fees apply. So the fees apply uniformly across all registrations, but you can set the fee at fifty cents or you can set it at, I think the highest I've seen for cities is twenty, but there's some cities talking about forty dollars for registration, which I think will stand the test of court, but that's not what we're proposing. Oh, it's the ten-dollar initial fee based on the feedback from the council and that you apply it a hundred percent to an increase in the expenditure basis of the street maintenance fee. So essentially if the council decides it doesn't want to do the fee in twenty-twenty-three, we would reduce the expenditure level. That, my first recommendation to you would be to reverse the level of street maintenance. So you, we've talked about enhancing street maintenance with the fee, so building above the base and above the average of spending our streets. Again, that's, that would be totally up to the council, their level of comfort we have. We set the ten-dollar amount as an assumption in the budget. What we've heard in the past from people's level of comfort. And it's similar about St. Croix County, as they would in current, and as they indicated, Pierce County could do, at any point they felt that was the right policy decision for them.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, close the council meeting and open up the public hearing on Norman's twenty-twenty-one dash ten. It's amending section seventeen, that one oh-four dot oh-four oh of the municipal code relating to special use permit. Does anybody in the audience have anything to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing and I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Orbitz twenty-twenty-one dash ten in Orbitz amending section seventeen point one oh-four point oh-four oh of the municipal code relating to special use permit.
Second. Okay, first and second, questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have an amendment to make tonight. Um, my amendment is about addressing odors, noises, nuisances, impacts from, on, um, items that we haven't recognized yet as a city that could be harmful to the zone it's going into, and I believe that if we increased three hundred feet to five hundred feet, that it would actually, would be capable of getting a better result from our constituents in our city. Three hundred feet to five hundred, we'd be, um, oh, it'd be three to, be about three to five houses length. We're looking at the differences as far as perceived, of course, lots has been different from house to house, but five hundred feet's pretty standard. So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to change three hundred feet to five hundred feet under section C procedure on page fifty-three.
I'll second that for this question here.
Okay, and first and second, any discussion on changing the, the forty from three hundred to five hundred?
Good to hear, Sean. I've got a problem with that sentence that you quote the amendment yet. My problem isn't necessarily the three hundred feet or the five hundred feet, but that we're only noticing property owners, we're not noticing residents. And as far as I recall, in this city, you're not required to own property to have same judgment as what happens in your community. And frankly, I think that our community recognize that every resident of our community has the right of participation, has to be informed to be knowledgeable what's going on in the neighborhood. And I think that that comes down to being a resident of that area, not a property owner. I have a real problem not being the three hundred feet or the five hundred feet, but that we're saying that if you don't own property in the city, we're not going to notice you and your voice doesn't matter. I admire that, but that is a good issue that's worthy of comment.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, having said, um, the plan commission, when this was discussed, that very issue came up and was part of the reason why we proposed changing anti-ala sign on the property that the special use permit was going to be on, so that people, even if they didn't So that people, even if they didn't perhaps even live in the neighborhood, but were, um, concerned about that piece of property, including the residents who lived nearby, could, um, could see the sign and, and get more information about, um, what, uh, what is being proposed.
I think that that's a very, well, I tried to feel that. Go ahead, thank you. Uh, I think that that's a very reasonable, uh, effort to take forward to broaden the knowledge of people, what's happening here and in the other half of our local government. Uh, but when we're granting special rights and privileges to people on basis of their property ownership and not to people that are residents of there. I guess I can't philosophically amend the floor. Uh, we should be discussing that, not a future amendment. Uh, but to me, 300 feet or 500 feet, I'm okay with both. Uh, I think that the signs, those issues that Diane, that the big lot of discussing committee are, are important and they've taken some steps to deal with those. Uh, I think that notifying people that live close to the, uh, site governed by the permit, whether that be 300 feet or 500 feet, should also get a look. If I may ask, uh, Mr. Mayor, also councilman Downing, uh, what advantages do you find 500 feet versus 300 feet?
500 people in, uh, improve community engagement work and otherwise be lacking. Much like you said, and I agree with your point, uh, people who live in homes that are renters and don't own property absolutely deserve a stay in their city government. Uh, in the 500 feet, although it's not perfect, it's still better than 300 feet when we did a wider swath. And, uh, what I'm looking at, you know, um, is my amendment on the floor today, that is what we have. What we have in the future, and I'm going to have Mr. Simpson answer this too, is that I believe we have an opportunity to in, you know, improve our community engagement, uh, and community standards, those, uh, guidelines I've been talking about and our comprehensive plan. And then when we do the bike path plan and other plans, it's going to have some of those elements that I'm talking about when, uh, recognizing nuisances, noises, odors, they can go well beyond 500 feet and certainly affect people who rent here just as well as people who own property. But just to clear, uh, clarify what I'm saying, Mr. Simpson, do we have an opportunity in our comprehensive plan to include environmental impact, noises, odors, uh, traffic impacts, safety issues, um, when we do our community standards and guidelines? So it could be a cheat sheet for the plan commission to look at, uh, the desires of our community as a whole?
Are we, are we still on the amendment for 300 feet or we answer that? I believe, do we have, have to stay in that part of the amendment or are we going for your email?
I, I think Councilmember Downing might be suggesting that that's influencing his willingness to settle for 500 feet at this time. If not, if my answer is yes to the other question.
Is that correct? So I think it is related, so, so you have that, I guess. Okay, so here's the thing, and I agree with what you're saying, Scott. Um, I don't believe that we have all the pieces to put together a bigger, uh, package for a community night because that requires more engagement. But I believe that the 500 feet is, uh, something that would be a good way for our community and it should be easy enough to agree to. That's why I didn't, uh, try to attach anything something bigger and long-winded tonight. Uh, but yes, the comprehensive plan would be an opportunity to get, uh, environmental impacts as well as other things such as nuisances, noise and odors, which would impact the greater community.
Correct.
Yeah, part of the comp plan is going to be determining what your policy guidelines are for considering development in the community. It'll be up to, to your steering committees and the council ultimately for adoption to decide how fine you want to get that in your comp. So, but is it well within the scope of the comp plan? The answer is yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. I, I'm all for increasing engagement in the community. I've, I've seen too many times when the citizens don't engage and, and later they come up and say, why, you know, why, why did this happen? And you say, well, you had all these opportunities and so we came forward. I, I think we've increased the engagement by having two readings of the plan commission. We've increased the engagement by having two readings of the council. I'm a little concerned that changing the 300 feet to 500 feet for just special use permits is going to create confusion in the, in, in the residents. Um, because all the other notifications, and I looked at community development director Peterson to, to help me understand this, all of our other notifications are 300 feet. So this would be an outlier, which I think would confuse people to say, well, I thought you changed it all to 500 and now you've got 500 here, 300 here. So I'm probably not able to support this as it sits today because I, I'm worried about the confusion of the 300 versus 500.
Maybe we can fix the other one some other time. We've got one in front of us today.
I understand, but I'd rather see an all or nothing change if we're going to do that.
Mr. Mayor's going to be doing all or nothing change? It's not on the agenda, is it?
No. I believe so.
Does anybody else have anything want to say on it? No? Okay, so we have first and second on the amendment, changing from 300 to 500. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we did that?
Can I suggest, I suggest we do a roll call. I mean, council's instructed that you should vote the same in the roll call that you just did in the.
Hi, Chris B.
Plunkett.
Aye.
No.
Carol.
Aye.
Dylan.
Aye.
Seth.
No.
No.
I'm.
Seth.
No.
Okay. Okay. Back to the original amendment.
And, uh, at this point.
I prefer again, first and second on the original.
At this point on the original, I'd like to offer an amendment to, uh, change the notification from being sent to all property owners to all residents within that special package.
Second.
Okay, first and second, quick question. Amy, on something like this, this, it goes to the houses themselves, right?
Yeah, I guess I want to, I think I can clarify. So is the amendment that we do not, we no longer send it to property owners? If they, uh, are not the residents of the property or would the amendment be better stated property owners and residents? I just want to understand the, the goal of your amendment.
I think a, a better, uh, wording would be the one you suggested, property owners and residents. So that if someone did own a property, if that invested financial interest in a special use permit, then it'd be granted to their resident, they would receive notification. But also this is not just protecting the financial interests of residents, but their multi-faceted interests of what's happening to the government. So I think the, the second option you offered, property owners and residents really comes with all.
And that one from a practical standpoint is relatively easy for us to implement because it would go to the property record, property owner record and current, then we'd also add a current resident to the, to the mailing, so to speak. So I'm 100% sure that's as easy as I think it is, but I believe it's reasonably, we, we can accomplish it. And again, we don't have that many EUDs or SCPs, I'm sorry, in a year. So it's not a process that's too onerous. So if I understood that you were, I think, accepting that and then you'd be looking for acceptance by the second or to amend the amendment to, to, so you're basically adding and residents, current residents or language like that is what the amendment that I understand.
I saw him move to adopt that language.
Okay, so we got a first and a second to homeowners and residents.
And, and to me, it makes a lot of sense because it speaks to the health, safety and well-being of all of our policies, not just a few. Thank you.
Comments on this amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, back to the original one again. Any more questions or comments?
Just for clarification, Mayor, then you're, you are approving, you have a main motion, correct? Christie, so the main motion has amended, which would include change from 300 to 500 feet for the notification, um, distance and adding and residents to the parties that would be notified.
And back to the original law, 47. Any more questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We will close the council hearing and open up the public hearing on ordinance 2021-11 ratifying and readjustment of wards in all the manning districts for purposes of 62-81 Wisconsin statute. Does anybody in the audience have anything to say about this? We will close the public hearing and open up the council, back open up the council hearing and I'll take a motion on this. Mr. Mayor. Okay.
Thank you, bro. Scott, uh, motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I think we'll move to the second. First is a change of agent for Tattersall Companies LLC. Uh, second is a change of agent for Main Street Bar and Grill LLC. Next one is a resolution approving weights and measure assessment schedule. Next one is a resolution approving writing off of unselectable accounts. Then is a resolution approving her fall there in Chamber Commerce and Tourism Bureau request for expansion of the open container exemption for Ra, River Dazzle. Uh, next is resolution approving the creation of a bicycle pedestrian plan steering committee. Uh, next one is a resolution approving shared ride taxi grant application to the state of Wisconsin, Department of Transportation for operating assistance for the year of 2022. And the last one is a resolution approved in 2022, due to 2023, shared ride taxi operating contract and 2022 public transit lease agreement with Ryan's Inc. Any more wanting?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll six of seven.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All the, uh, running thing.
Have a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to people of consent, agenda items eight through 12.
Second.
Uh, questions and comments on the eight through 12? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, Mr. Morris, I'd be able to poll number, uh, six and seven.
Yes. Uh, if I could, I'd like to ask the agents my typical three questions. This McDonald, could I ask you, Sarah? Uh, I didn't get a chance to talk to you beforehand, but I ask every agent, regardless of their type of facility or establishment they have, the same three questions. Um, do you currently hold your responsible bar to our server's license?
Yes.
Do you understand the rules of an agent?
Yes.
Do you understand that if an alcohol related violation happens and you're not there, you're still responsible?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I also have questions regarding over serving at your bar and what policies and procedures you allow in place to ensure, uh, we are not over serving customers.
But we do have, we do have, we, everybody goes through the alcohol training and they understand, uh, the recognition that someone's being over served.
So what are the signs in that you've gone through that alcohol training? How would you recognize someone that over served?
Someone that's, um, being overt, um, various when they're not normally like that. Spilling drinks, um, just not being there for themselves, asking for doubles, those types of things.
Okay, so you're not keeping track of, say, somebody.
No, you're, the part I should be counting the drinks, um, you know, doing the mathematical.
Evaluations that prevent somebody coming out the door of 23, 5.
Right, yeah. You got a number of hours if they've eaten.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Oh, do you want to do both of them? Or we're just going to do, well, it doesn't matter. Oh. I think we get it one at a time.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I, I make a motion, we approve the change of agent for Tattersall Companies.
I'm sorry. First and second, any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. Mr. Bull, I know you've been an agent in the past, but I don't ask you these questions. So here are the questions I ask and I'm going to throw them real quickly again. Uh, you, you currently hold your responsible server's license?
I do.
You understand the role of an agent?
Yes.
And you understand if you're, if an alcohol related violation occurs, even if you're not, even if you're not present, you're still responsible?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, true. Um, what policies and procedures were held to, will Tattersall be engaging in?
This is Main Street.
Well, this is Main Street, my bad, my bad.
Sorry.
I think Tattersall. Sorry about that. Will Main Street be engaging in, uh, to ensure that we are not overturning customers?
Our bartenders, well, as well, um, have gone through classes and again, they, our system keeps track of, it put it in the system, how many drinks they've had, they've eaten. Yeah. And currently where hours are limited right now to, uh, kitchen hours, so. So we're not openly that they. Fully controlled.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thanks, man. Um, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we accept the, uh, change of agent for Main Street Bar and Grill LLC.
Six.
Okay, first and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And Mr. Plunkett, you polled 13.
Yeah, uh, I'd, I'd like some more information about this contract. Um, the 31, 34 hour, um, how many rides are we doing each year? What is our average cost per ride? Um, as a business that the city is doing business with, what, uh, what does that employer be for employees that brings them, plots up to 31, 34? Uh, I'm, I'm aware of that. Maybe Mr. Simpson simply can approach my numbers about transportation issues fair than our survey.
And so I'll try to, and so I get to answer that question first. So, um, we found that satisfaction with, uh, public transportation was lower than average, um, which is the comparable communities, plus upon that our utilization of public transportation was lower than our communities. Probably part of that was due to the fact that we have higher than, uh, walking and biking as an alternative to community and that we have walkability and bikeability scores. So you could opine that some of the, the lack of interest in public transportation is because they have some alternative, um, certain of those in the agency. According to the survey, those of you in the service have some concerns about quality. The shared ride taxi service, in short, is a partnership between the state of Wisconsin. It's intended to be a community for smaller communities throughout the state, outside of the major metropolitan areas to have some kind of public transportation provided. Um, it's a point to point, essentially taxi service, uh, capital grants and operating grants. So we get grants very similar to the metro areas for the capital, just like when Madison buys a bus, they get 80% of the bus covered by, um, essentially the federal government and state government and 20% is their cost through fares or other means. There's a similar situation that we have with our vans, um, that we purchase. And then operating grants are grants from the state of Wisconsin to support operating is to bring the costs of the rides to the local down. And then we have the, we're in charge to try to make that. So our service is not an enterprise fund in the sense that expect, uh, even on it. In addition to the state funding, we also have, I've been fortunate to have arrangements with both Pearson and St. Croix County where provides some operating grants on the operating side to help us with that. Um, I think the assistant city administrator, Stroud, probably has numbers handier than someone right here to. that someone right here too. The rates that we pay Runnings are influenced by the state of Wisconsin. They have some guidance for us about what we need to pay our operators. Say that, I don't mean the bus driver, drivers themselves, but the operator. And then we have some prohibition about anti-competitive behavior, using our service to try to compete with private services like taxis or if there was another private bus service in town. We have some guidelines about what we can do. So it's a big maze of regulations between the federal state, and there's very few city puts on the service. So you do set the fares and you do approve the competitive contract in which this was actually the goal through our B and A, and so this is an extension of... left contract. So, Mr. Stroud, I think you spoke ridership, et cetera.
Yes, sir. I think we, in terms of total rides, the taxi provides, both in 2020 and 2021 year to date, if we kind of map out the trend we're on, 19,000. I will let you know that's down pretty significantly from 2019, when it was 33,000. And I think anecdotally, we assume COVID is a pretty, so you're going to get an impact on it. I did just do kind of real quick self-lost math as soon as I heard you ask the question.
Yeah.
And so, you know, when you take 19,000 rides and do the division, it comes out, if you, if you look at the city share of the operations for 2022, it's 66,000. It's up to $3.52 a ride.
What is running for 60,000? That one is the city paying here, but...
So in total, in total, if, the total cost for the contract, it's 1640 dollars a ride.
1649, we go pretty much less than mine from the city?
May, right? Yeah, yeah, not that far. It's not even fair. Sure.
Let's, let's random that. So assuming that each and every ride we do is that five mile, isn't that? We're looking at $3.40, $3.30, let's say around nine. With the vehicle that the operator is paying.
Direct the lease as part is our responsibility, is the arrangement.
They're part of the maintenance. I mean, they, they, some of the maintenance of the vehicles during the course of their lease.
Okay.
Yep. This is not the most efficient way to provide qualification, if that's the question. The answer's no, it's not. It's essentially a lifeline service that's, lifeline service that's not, not provided by a number of cities for that reason. They choose not to do it because they think it's something they don't want to subsidize as a community, but it's something that we've chosen to provide. And much like what the discussion I had with council, it's been a long time. The fire service, you're not always, I would be careful about direct cost analysis because part of what we're doing with the shared ride taxi is providing availability. So we're paying for availability and the on-demand nature, just like we do with the fire. If you looked at how much it costs for each fire we fight, and it's a pretty astronomical cost, that's not really what the community's paying for. What they're paying for is the ability to be able to, to a certain level of service. And that's, that's what the taxi service is also. We're paying a, for our fee to the contractor to be available. With some admitted, admitted ability to leverage the actual volume of rides that are occurring and responsiveness and all those things that you would want some influence over. And so it basically is a partnership that we work on constantly. Right now, I'd say the dispatch services and things, we've been pretty satisfied with their ability to turn rides around. We'll have seen their taxis stationed at different parts of the community, so they don't necessarily just go back to the station and wait and have, or some efficiencies gained. The fact that if they know on three o'clock, they're going to have a bunch of rides and stop in a town, trip solid or dies, waiting for that next ride. But it's a challenge to be efficient with this type of operation.
Yeah, well, where are those, those challenges that you speak about? Also intrigued by our residents' view of how those challenges have been being met. And it seems to me that there's a gap there in between those challenges and performance, by the way, as well as, you know, a gap there between what we're paying for, what's going back into our community. Maybe somebody that does a little more business than I can can help me out with the math on this. For the 31-34 hour, assuming that these running drivers are getting full benefits like a city employee would, that would equal out to $20 an hour for a driver. But aren't we certain these drivers aren't getting benefits like a city employee would? There seems to be another gap there in between what we're paying for and what we're getting and what we're paying for of what the workers are doing. I would be interested myself in rebidding this contract and seeing if we can do better because frankly, I think that the performance of this contractor to this city, as indicated by the resident surveys, the quantity of rides delivered and cost per ride, doesn't have muster.
So you don't want to approve this? Are you making an amendment or are you...
I think it's just that in having this rebid for this year, that just because they got it last year, this isn't a guarantee that they can come back every year and do less and get more. That's not how things work in the world.
So I need something from you.
Well, let's make an amendment, put this contract back out for bid and see if we can do a little better.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions.
And I need a second on this.
Stop it or die.
One second, so hold on. Any other questions on 13?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor has some questions for... So, Mr. Simpson, how many different groups have we bid out? And how many of them actually qualify for taking this bid?
I don't have that information. I know that, know that in my time here at the city, so probably three rounds of bidding, we've had more won. But I, I would have to search to tell you who bid in each of the years and what the names of the firms were. If I recall, we didn't have a lot. This is not a contract that has a lot of interest compared to other city contracts that we put out. That's, that's a pretty general statement. I'm sorry, I can't... There's not a lot of people itching to get a shared ride taxi contract, and that's part of the reason that Running has been successful in getting a number of the contracts is because almost the people that are willing, reasonable job, apparently speaking. I would tell you from my, that's my professional opinion, is that I understand the dissatisfaction and understand the cost factor. I think the alternatives are, including putting ourselves.
I agree. I know we've talked about this before in other conversations I've had with city staff, the difficulties about approving it, and I, you know, couldn't be better. I think we're going to have to look to the transportation, like we were talking about, if we're going to consider doing anything like, and that's something that would happen in the future or not, if there was such a thing. Thank you, Mayor.
So, Mr. Plunkett polled it, so I still need a first and a second on this, this resolution, consent agenda.
I'll make a resolution, I'll make a motion, we approve a resolution approving the 2022-23 shared ride taxi operating contract and the 2022 public lease agreement with Runnings Inc.
Great. Any more questions or comments on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed.
Okay, now just move on to history report. That's got anything for us, or anybody got anything to say?
Thinking of that, I mentioned that appreciate that it will be celebrated, a number of you will be celebrating in different places in the community, Veterans Day and... City offices will be closed to traffic, block of traffic on that day. It's a day we, actually, there's some participation in activities throughout the community and then we also do kind of a reset for files and other things, getting ready for each year. We'll also be closed on November 25th and 26th, you know, just, thanks. I remind the community that both, and all three of those dates, because we're 24/7/365 operation, that there's, the number of city employees working on those days has just limited access to city hall on those days. River Dazzle is happening, you approved a change, the open container this evening. That helps kick off the holiday season on November 26th, includes a chili prod parade. And the Chambers website is the best place for information, it's rchamber.com. Couple kudos, the, the community was named one of the safest college communities in America recently. And so we appreciate the work of all, of all police department, prevention, and all the other efforts that we do to, to keep, keep crime low and people feel safe. We also were able to present a check to the Assistance Resource Center, $5,000 dollars to provide emergency bill pay assistance for customers. We're happy to do that again this year and also in the past along, congratulations on Luke Bowman, who was the top of his class at Chippewa Valley Technical College in the journeyman. And so he'll be graduating from that apprentice program and be journeying here beginning in September. So congratulations to Luke. Happy to keep us, us here at the city. And previously, I sent out today some updates on staffing. We've seen what has been appointed interim water whistleblower operation, sorry, interim water whistleblower superintendent. And Todd McCloskey was appointed the interim city engineer. Both of those two positions are leading the city service, and so we're happy to, to grade internal candidates to help us out. So, you happy to take any questions?
Anything, Scott? Scott?
Okay, next we're going to recess in the closed session for Wisconsin State statute 19.85, one need for the following purposes. Delivering or negotiating purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, conducting other classified public business, having a tentative or bargaining reasons required in the closed session. To wit, this is for the fall for no property.
Mayor, make a motion to move this closed session.
Thank you. If you can grab a moment, please.